Oh my gosh, I can't get it. It's not, I'll read it out. Yes, you may. Can't tell what's on. Um, my owl's coming up.
All right, Lori, are you ready?
Ready, but you are.
All right, I've got seven oh one, we're gonna bring the statement order. All right, welcome Becca, would you like to start in the roll call?
John Manson. Mike Bird.
Here.
Sandra Gerlach.
Here.
Tom Stewart.
Yes.
Monica McHugh.
Here.
And Marita Keith.
Here.
Christine Fox.
Here.
We have a floor, all right, can I get a motion and a second on the minutes from last meeting?
So.
We have a motion, we have a second, a second. Attention, first by Tom, second by Mary. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Lori, I'll let you get started.
Okay.
And I will remind the public, we do not add any public comments to the agenda tonight, so we will not be allowing comments. So we're gonna go through what we have discussed and proposed at the la- at the last few meetings.
And I'm gonna go ahead and call out something that going forward is gonna be where it needs to be.
Okay.
Um, in the June meeting of the zoning commission, there was a four to three vote for height requirements.
Yes.
Maximum total height of the turbines is to be four hundred feet. It did not make it to the draft ordinance. My bad, but I, it's going, and we know it's there, we just know it did not get into document. Okay, so, and anyone that doesn't, isn't muted, please, so now.
It's, it's supposed to be more than. Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So anyway, just making note of that, and if you'll add that to the notes that we brought that up and out right away. So let's just start at the beginning of our draft ordinance, and here, I wanna make sure I can get that up on the screen, so we can share that.
Seven oh four, we're gonna get started, um, John is drawing this, and he just mentioned.
Normally you can do it.
See if I.
Well, Janet's not muted.
The one thing we get.
Might have, might have them all covered now.
Okay.
So, let's get back to them. Okay, and as I go, I'm gonna try to pull out your questions, Monica and Tom, we talked about that. Um, there was concerns that had been addressed to the commission, um, in person at the May meeting, and then again, um, some by email, some by phone calls. So I'm gonna try to pull those out as we go through them in the ordinance, okay? So, um, we have the definitions. Easement. So this is all just definitions up here until page. I'm gonna try to find that one real quick, you guys.
Janet.
I think it's Janet.
Janet.
Okay, so down to page four is just all definitions, what the, um, well, here, let's go back to here then, cuz I see that we have a um, definition on a setback. Minimum required distance from a residence or other occupied permanent structure of a minimum size of a hundred and forty-four square feet. The property line right away or easement, and that we guys had stated out, uh, a hundred and forty-four feet, particularly on the agricultural buildings to prevent, um, occupied livestock buildings being portable and moved in, uh, there's a temporary structure, just, yeah. So. So we talked about so the citing our application requirements, uh, basically, the way this was set out was to be a special exception use in the A1, M1, M2, and C1 zoning districts.
If I could remind everybody, please get your phones as well, thank you.
So it would be special, the commercial wax, the commercial wind energy conversion systems would be only allowed in, uh, A1, M1, M2, and C1. Uh, it, A spells out the application process, which includes contact information, legal descriptions, total height of the tower, uh, rotor damp diameter of all wind turbines, and the means of interconnecting with electrical grid. A site layout would be part of it, including property lines, uh, where the wind turbines are located, electrical lines, interconnecting points. Uh, engineer certificates are required in the supplemental standards. Documentation of legal land, um, control, and proof of landowner consent. Uh, a geological survey, and topographical map, or similar data. Location of wetlands, scenic and natural areas, including bluffs within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. Oh, I might wanna do that, yes. And Tom, feel free to point that out anytime.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, there needs to be an acoustical analysis, FAA permits and applications. Evidence of permit application made to the FAA, it must have FAA approval before beginning any construction.
There should be another period after the second FAA.
Okay. Thank you. A decommissioning plan is also part of the application process. Just description of po- potential impacts on nearby wax units, this non, non-commercial wax and wind resources on adjacent properties. The application owner and operator or operator, uh, must be in contact with the zoning administrator in Jackson County, and is Jackson County Emergency Management Administrator. And they shall all, in conjunction, develop an emergency action plan and have it in place before permitting is to be granted. Just looking to see what this is. Um, if the project does not conform to the regulations of the commercial wax and meteorological towers set forth in the ordinance, the Board of Adjustment may consider a request for a variance from the requirements after the following has occurred. And that just lays out the requirements of a variance for for, for anything that they're asking for that's outside of the ordinance.
That's the same procedure for any Board of Adjustment.
Correct, that would be just like. Okay, so, for example, so if Tom was looking, well, let's not use Tom, cuz he has a farmer, he's a real farmer, let's use Mary. Well, but, or me, so if I was looking to build something that was, um, higher than what's required or permitted in our zoning districts, which is thirty-five feet for a machine shed, and I was building a forty-foot miss- machine shed, I would have to ask for a, a variance or special exception to see if we could be permitted, and when they would typically permit that is if they find, so I want forty feet where I'm located, they're gonna look at where I am, uh, and is there any impact to any neighbors, any impact to site distance, or anything, you know, am I blocking an intersection with my height? And if they say no, that's not gonna be an impact, then they would very likely grant that, that special exception for that. So they're looking for impact. Um, the application shall notify the zoning department of any changes to the information provided in section three, which is the application process, while it's still waiting to be approved. So if there's change in ownership, they've decided to move the, the tower fifty feet one direction, that all needs to be reported and addressed. So this next section, section four, just goes over some of the, the requirements for color and finish.
Wait and scroll again, maybe.
Thank you.
Maybe turn that, that's your job.
That's your job, Tom.
That's your job.
Just trying to help the crowd out.
Thank you. And then it, it describes what the tower configuration is, and, um, one of the concerns that we've had about I don't wanna see those flashing red lights, that's addressed right here. So one of the things the commission talked about was aircraft detection lighting system. So what that does, i- if the FAA approves it, it only lights up and flashes when there's an aircraft within a certain distance of that tower, I don't know how many miles it is, but it's a certain distance. And from what I read, it can reduce the amount of flashing time down by ninety-five percent of instead of just from, from dust to, dust to dawn. Um, so that's where that addresses, and it, it does hit some of the concerns that people had about that. Um, the next one is signage, which is a little bit of a safety issue, and, um, they give them ten days to have that signage up with contact information of who's managing the towers and emerg- and, um, information on the emergency action plan. Also, the contact information, as we discussed, the commission, um, was also for, there was concern about pro- um, aerial applicating. So what this does, it also has a contact information. Turbines can have, um, I'm trying to think of the actual word they use, but they can cease operation of those for aerial applicating. Um, there's some times when, um, NOAA or the National Weather Service, if they're in a certain proximity to a storm, they will actually request, make a phone call, what, or however they contact the turbine people and ask for a cease of operation for a certain period of time, so they can accurately see the radar or for aerial applicating, they can actually, um, get in without turbines turning. Um, feeder lines is another, uh, another part of this, and it gives the information about depth, which is pretty standard language from what we've seen. Waste disposal, I know the commission added a little bit stronger language in that. Um, cuz didn't you guys add immediate disposal to that?
I think we did.
Yeah, I hear from one. Cuz that was in another, uh, another part, I think, under safety, but we'll, we'll take note of that, make sure we can find that. Ground clearance, so the, the blade tip of any wind turbine, at its lowest point, shall have a gl- ground clearance of no less than fifty feet, which was one of the things you guys had talked about earlier, because it seems like there was a wide range from as low as fifteen feet, uh, and on up. Um, signal interference. Base slate, there's, um, the applicant shall provide applicable microwave transmission app, excuse me, shall, applicant shall provide applicable microwave transmission providers and the emergency manager administrator with copies of the project summary and site plan. In accordance with section three, which is earlier in this ordinance, um, the applicant shall minimize and mitigate any interference with electromagnetic communications, such as radio, television, telephone signals that are caused by any, uh, commercial wax. If after construction of the wax, the owner or operator receives a written complaint related to the above mentioned interference, the owner or operator shall take reasonable steps to respond to the complaint. FAA, um, FAA, so the FAA has to confine, comply with all FAA standards and permits. So that is actually a process, and Monica, anytime you wanna interject or you wanna explain it, um, has to be done in advance of our applications.
Yeah, before any, before the application even comes to the county, the federal government actually, actually requires the wind turbine companies to have a plan and an approval from the FAA, so that's the first step for any commercial wind energy. I don't know if it's from the one or not, but the whole FAA thing, it's not consistent throughout the back. You've got periods after an F, an A and A on some places, FAA with no period, it's out there. Especially at the property page six. Yeah. Either with the.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we're gonna be out of.
Okay.
About, okay, make that standard through.
We'll make it standard.
Make it standard, please, yeah.
And you'll get a note on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This has been very fluid.
Oh, I know.
So, um, setbacks. So setbacks from inhabited structures, as it's written currently, uninhabited structure, also, we used a definition of anything that's over a hundred and forty-four square feet and permanently occupied by humans or livestock. And no distance less than two times the total height of the turbine, or one thousand three hundred and twenty feet, which is ever is greater. Um, waivers to this stipulation may be granted, so basically, if, um, a neighbor wanted to allow something, this is where we, we've, we've left that language in there about waivers. Um, met towers have to be a minimum of one point one times the total height. Uh, property line setbacks.
Let's, I wanna.
Wanna go back?
A little bit.
Sure.
One thing that, one thing that we have talked about a lot are the setbacks. And we've had a lot of comments, we've had a lot of input, finally, on setbacks with other counties. There's a county in Iowa that has like a three thousand two hundred and fifty foot setback. And what I can say to that is, in that county, it's typically very flat. Um, the county that I'm from, one of the, uh, farmers that my husband used to work for, farmed six thousand acres. We don't see people in this area, there could be in Clinton County, but in Jackson County, you don't see anybody farming six thousand acres with no livestock. So when you look at the terrain on the county that upped their, um, uh, their setback, it is a county that's very flat, um, fewer landowners. And so, we had a huge discussion on setbacks, I mean, I think all of us, I don't know, I think we spent two hours on a setback discussion, uh, top or, at, at one meeting, I mean, it's, it's been. So this is not something that has just been thrown in recently, we have been working on this since last October. Um, I'm thankful that you guys are here to hear this. Um, I wish people would have noticed a, a year ago, but this is where we have agreed to on the one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. So.
Well, I was gonna point out something, Lori kinda touched on it. Um, there was some talk, and some people talked to me about, you know, um, good neighbor agreements and that, you know, by having, being able to put a waiver in, that does allow for a good neighbor payment, if, um, if that would be, you know, feasible, so.
I, I have talked to a couple people, one was a, a lady out in Powersheet County that I met at a retirement party in Powersheet. She has two turbines, one to the east, one to the west. And first she said they're an eighth of a mile away from her house, well, I took her address and looked it up, they're fourteen hundred feet from each side of her house. Um, she does get a good neighbor stipend, I didn't know her well enough to ask her what that stipend was. Um, but when I also, I asked her, I asked her about vibration, she's like, no. I asked her about the shadow, well, she volunteered about the shadow flicker, she says, yeah. The, the, when the blades spin, you know, it, it kinda gets dark for a second, and she was describing shadow flicker, but she said that was a non-issue. I asked her about any potential health issues or any health changes between her and her hus- she and her husband, and she looked at me like I had three eyes. Uh, another fellow that I know, he's the county assessor in Marshall County, in the last year, he bought a house in Marshall County. He's within fourteen hundred feet of two turbines. I asked him about it, asked him about shadow flicker, vibration, he said shadow flicker, he's never home long enough to see it. Uh, vibration, he said, no, um. And then he did volunteer that he does get a good neighbor stipend, and he's using the old value that his, that the previous owners had. I asked him, did you negotiate for a different value, and he says, nobody probably could have. So he gets a six hundred dollar check the first of January of each year. So that's what he gets, but he says, it's, it's a non-issue. But now during a repowering process, he does get a good neighbor stipend of a thousand dollars, or something over a thousand dollars, just because there's more activity going on in his area. So, just to add to that, Tom, if that was okay.
Can I just point out that if we're making things uniform, on page seven, under A, we have a hundred and forty-four SQ, with a B, and on page three, we have a hundred and forty-four ASF. Oh, yeah, yeah, we did mention that last time too, you have a square foot, so whether it be SF or square feet or SQ.
Okay.
Make that standard.
Okay.
And, and I will add to Lori's comment, um, my father-in-law has one of his property, and one of the houses that he owns, he sold it on contract, and the owner of that house, um, he actually gets, uh, I, a little over two thousand dollars an acre, or two, not an acre, two, two thousand dollars a year for the nuisance factor on that, so it depends on what's negotiated and who the company is.
And the tower is not on his property, or?
No, but it's right next to her, yeah.
Just to clarify.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the one, it's on my father-in-law's property, but it's not on, it's not on the land, the house owners.
Hey, I'm, there's one that's still hot, I'm gonna try to grab it.
And my next one's too long. That, two, one, two, five, two, six, two at the bottom.
Thank you. So we'll jump back in where we were at setbacks on page seven. So we got to inhabited structure, we didn't get to the property lines, did we?
No.
Okay, so, property line setbacks should be no less than one point one times the tower height, unless appropriate waivers have been received from an adjoining property owner. Uh, I also had a note in here for you guys, is that what you guys wanted? If not, we need to look at number, um, C also, just to make sure we were, um, in line with that.
Right?
Yes, sir.
I have a question on property lines. Did we everybody come to a conclusion that one point one was okay? Uh, the one point one times the height of the tower from the property line? If you, that you have on this what the commission wants.
Right.
I just, uh, have a, a question about that. Is that, you have any notes on that's what we wanted as a group?
No, and I wanted to compare that to line C, because that talks about the distance from rightaways. And they match, so that's what I wanted to make sure, okay, so the difference between a property line in my eye and the, um, the rightaway, so the property, the rightaways in the front of my property.
Right, the rightaway, the rightaway adjoins a public roadway.
Uh-huh.
Is what the rightaway is, the property line, because technically, the, the landowner owns it to the road, but the rightaway includes the road and the ditch, basically.
Right, so I didn't know if you guys wanted, I mean, if we wanted to keep that standard, or if you guys, could you guys really hadn't talked about changing? That one point one time, so hide from the property lines, well, there's been all kinds of talk, but nothing.
I think.
Ever stuck.
I think we did, because I think we discussed with the height of the tower. Um. The one point one. And that should be standard in here too.
Okay.
Um, we talked about it being longer. But I think when we looked at some of the properties, I think it was almost. I think it excluded those.
Um, and then.
We don't have a road in front of us, we don't have a rightaway.
No, you don't. Yeah.
We need to probably leave a property line, because property line is what we use all around your perimeter of your line.
Well, except for the rightaway, if you're in.
Well, then, then we gotta have two separate.
Then you really.
But I think it shouldn't have from the rightaway and the property lines.
I I I could pull up a map with rightaway lines.
Property line, I don't care about the rightaway.
Okay.
And I don't think six hundred feet is very, whatever, six hundred feet's not very far.
If no, because the the max height is four hundred, so it would be eight.
That when the six hundred did, if you went four hundred feet, that's only four hundred and forty feet. Just for clarification, but the ground max side of four hundred feet is that's in the tenth for the border.
That's the tip of the tower height, turbine height.
That's not very far.
That's too close, that is too close.
Okay, so four, um, okay, so four hundred, one point one would be four hundred and forty.
Yeah.
For four hundred, one point two would be four eighty. Uh, five twenty would be one point three. Um, hang on, I'm gonna get doing my math here.
Have you looked uh at any comparisons um? County-wise, uh I've I've checked on a couple of them, there are a lot more than.
Some, some are.
Five hundred feet or six hundred.
That some are, some are, and actually, one of the requests from from property owners is six times the tower height from the setback. So on a four hundred foot turbine, they want a setback of almost a half a mile.
Four hundred.
So that's um, that's one of the, one of the things there.
I thought there was one that seemed like thirty-six hundred.
Um, there, there are some that are like Union County, Buchanan, Marion. They have ordinances that are actually truly prohibitive. If you look at them, they're they're saying they're restrictive. But by the time you start drawing one-mile circles around each turbine, or one-mile circles on the perimeter of each town, and one. Or three-mile circles around a park, and a five-mile circle around an eagle's nest, you've locked up that whole county. And in that, I know that's the goal.
This is a more discussion, so please, no applause. We're discussing what the ordinance is, what we're gonna send to the supervisors, so please remain quiet.
But some are, you know, some are more restrictive, done, just prohibitive, and but still hiding behind their restrictiveness.
Do we know why, was it Union County that changed from something, someone?
Yeah, that was three thousand.
Yeah.
So what generated that change, do we know?
Public input. Public input, and there's counties like Boone County, I've talked to several zoning administrators. And Boone County is more of a, an a balanced ordinance like Delaware's, which was our basis. Um. He hasn't had any complaints or any problems, Chickasaw County last year, kind of a.
He hasn't listened to us who own property in Boone County and like the windmill a half mile away.
Well, but at the same time, he hasn't had any, as far as, you know, just the looking at it, he hasn't had any actual complaints of. Sickness, you know, any, any of the things that people are addressing.
There hasn't been any of that, I can see that.
Yeah, it's not just, I don't wanna look at this. Um, so, but, cause there's still gonna be that, but as far as valid complaints, um, he said he hasn't had any. Um, talked to Chickasaw County, they went online with their first one in December of last year, and. That's been a non-issue up there. Um, I'd have to like look at all the people I've talked to, but uh I didn't take a lot of notes on stuff like that. I was looking more for the ones with problems. So, but anyway, so that, John, you were talking about, did you wanna, uh, do you guys wanna talk about greater?
I just wanted to poison my opinion, but I am not in favor of a one point one uh figure for setbacks and property.
And what, and one time we talked and we never settled on it, but we were talking more like one point two fives. You're still not, you're still not enough of that, yeah. Well, the truth of the matter, and in my opinion, is, is, you know, this is good that we get this all down in case. But the four hundred foot restriction is basically, you know, locking us out at this point.
Right.
We, and I know there's a lot of people in in the room that, you know, are okay with that. But, you know, the standard height of windmills now is like six hundred feet, and if we, the four hundred foot restriction we put on it already. Is, you know, already, you know, made it prohibitive for Jackson County.
Right, and so matter what we do with the setbacks, it probably doesn't matter.
Right, so, so we're, we're working on some details here that probably aren't gonna matter in the long run with this four hundred foot wind height. But I'm not gonna say it won't, but it that would be the indication.
It's pretty much a kill shot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, do you guys still wanna address it, or?
Yeah.
I mean, that's up to you.
John, what, what would you think would be reasonable?
Oh, um. About the. I'm just, and I'm thinking of, I'm kinda selfish that way. Where I live, I have all the property around me, the last piece I bought, but still, I didn't have anybody uh within a quarter of a mile, which is. You know, a couple thousand feet, and I'm using myselfy self as an example, I would not want. A tower within four hundred feet of my property line, because my property line is right across the road from my house.
Sure, I I and I appreciate that, um. Uh, one thing we talked about is, you know, when we looked at maps on different occasions, if we put in a, you know, like a two thousand foot. And then we add the restrictions, you know, like with the um towns and. There's a lot of different, um, you know, uh, public areas and such, we really are already. Basically excluding the bulk of Jackson County. And um so. I don't want a set of applause or anything, but, you know, if that's what you're, if that's what we're going for, we're, we're already pretty much there.
Are we there at four hundred feet, I know we voted, so that's a draft, is that?
Well, it's up to the supervisor, it's, it's up to the supervisors, uh, yeah, that's our recommendation, because we voted on it, yes, absolutely. But it's ultimately, it's up to the supervisor.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring up, um, just a visual for you guys here, uh. I was trying to find some property that was nice square, um, that I could use, for example. Uh, you know what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna go to my place, and I will draw a a line that way. Cause that's easy to do, and just as a visual, so we can actually see what you're locking out with certain setbacks.
It's a lot.
It's it's huge.
Yeah.
So we're gonna use this property right here. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna draw a one-mile circle around this property. So, well, here, I'll just back it up, I'll do it to twenty-six forty. Because that is what um some of the setbacks, basically where you guys were, were going, we're looking at a half a mile. So if I draw a half-mile circle around a property. I think I've excluded a lot of, a lot of, a lot of land. And then when we start looking at the people that wanna do the um fifty-two eighty. We've knocked out even more land. So you, cause basically, if you're using a mile around as a buffer. You've locked out every easement agreement that has come across. It has locked down the whole county. And then let's throw a mile around every cemetery, that some people requested, every city.
Every part.
You, every part, you've locked, you know, you've locked it out. But then again, like we've said, our four hundred feet turbine height is probably already been the kill shot on it anyway.
Right, you see four hundred and forty. So there's a way to this or the train number.
Excuse me. This is just for discussion.
So four hundred feet is the, what you guys were talking about for maximum turbine height.
Oh, yes.
Four hundred and.
Four hundred.
Why did you use a mile, Lori?
Um, because that is some of the um numbers that people have been sending us, that they wanna see. A mile setback from any occupied structure.
I understand, but I don't think there's anybody here that. Uh, whatever vote for a mile, but.
I know, and then the, so the other request has been a half mile. So we back that off to. We back that off, oh shit, it's mad at me now. Sorry about that. So you can see that, that blocks off a lot of real estate with just a half mile, um, so here, let's use that for an example then. So you have a person that owns a hundred and sixty acres, which would be a. Four quarter quarters in, in stacked in a square. So basically, you'd be locking out, if you were going even to property lines, you've just locked out that much real estate. If someone was to put that turbine in the middle of that. They've just locked out. They wouldn't be able to build it there, a lot of the easement agreements look, you know, just four quarter quarters. So if you put it in the center, that's one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. So you can't, you wouldn't be able to make it work with a hundred and sixty acres. A lot of them, I've seen look like, well, would look like this. Like nine quarter quarters. You can't fit one in that at one thousand three hundred and twenty feet, if you, or even, well, barely with that, um. That's twenty, the twenty-six forty is dead, you can't get one in that. For here, just uh, so if you even throw it here. Sorry, I don't like this browser. Never mind, but uh, this is one, one thousand three hundred and twenty feet from this point to this point. So if you had one sitting here, you're not gonna, you're not gonna make it. So that gives, kinda gives you guys a little spatial reference.
Well, realistically, if you add in down by the Mississippi, the flyways and all of that, that the, that the US governments are gonna restrict, you know. You know, we're, we're talking, we really are talking a very small amount of land in Jackson County that's gonna be even. You know, possible to put a windmill on.
Right, and my understanding that even some of the easement agreements, um. Close to the river.
Yeah.
Aren't even being considered.
Right, yeah, cause, you know, we, we all know that, that, that that's gonna play into it as well.
Right, it's, yeah, that is my understanding that that's not being considered, but there's still easement agreements sitting, sitting over here.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and it's, and it's close to the um Army Corps of Engineers, and they have their own.
Probably federal checks.
Yeah.
Balances too. Yep. But anyway, so do you guys wanna address the setbacks further, um, one point one, one point two?
I'd be in favor of six hundred and sixty, but it would be an eighth of a mile.
For the um.
The setbacks.
From the rightaway.
Property line.
Okay.
And right away.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so Mike's making a motion. Or do you wanna think about this, so let's say.
Well, hang on a second.
I was just gonna look.
So for proper parliamentary procedure, I'm gonna second his motion, and then we. To further the discussion, so second.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so more discussion by the board on this, so.
What are you gonna bring up?
I was gonna bring up the fact of the tower height was greater, do you wanna? Do you wanna reconsider doing, um?
Oh, you mean it either or?
Uh, well, yeah, or greater, um, like one point, a one point five, or, you know, one and a half times or two times.
Yeah, cause.
Instead.
Yeah.
Depending on.
If they got an adjustment from the Board of Adjustments, you'd want it taller, you'd want it longer.
I was just figuring four hundred, it's not gonna make any difference anyway.
Right.
But yeah, if we did that, it'd be.
So if you did one point five.
Well, with six hundred, it'd be one point one.
Okay, right, but if you had a six, if you, well, yeah, but if you had a six hundred.
What you'd, what you'd wanna do to be comparable for your six hundred and sixty on a four hundred foot, you'd have to go like one point. Uh, one, one point five five or something like that, uh, the height.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, right, be comparable.
Yeah, okay, so.
To get it over, get it over there. Yeah, so I would be seeing like a seconded, and I'd be, I'd be in favor like one point five.
Yeah, I could go on.
Or six hundred sixteen, or thirteen twenty, or six hundred and sixty feet.
Six hundred and sixty, whichever is greater.
Correct, yes, okay, yeah.
All right, we do have a motion out there. So we can vote on the six hundred and sixty feet.
And we're saying, seeing how the guy that made the motion and the second agreed to change it, we can change.
Okay, that's.
So, so we're both agreeing on that.
Would you like to restate the motion?
Okay, so I, I'll make the motion that we make it one point five times the height of the tower. Or six hundred and sixty feet, whichever is greater.
There you go.
And you seconded that.
Yes.
Discussion.
More discussion.
Property lines and rightaways.
Property line and rightaways. Make them both that way. That way it's standard, that way it's. Sure. I don't think I'll make any difference at all.
I.
Probably not, but it's, we, we need to get down on, you know.
Yeah, we need to get it right.
Right.
Any, any other comments, John?
Not enough.
That's fine, John, you.
Yeah.
I don't think there's enough to there.
That's fine, we, we've had three to four votes before here.
So what's our vote, and let's, should we do a roll call vote?
Go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Very true.
Yeah, let's do a roll call vote on this. And Paulie Lance.
Okay.
Yeah.
John?
No.
Sandra?
Yes.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Christine?
No.
Mary?
No.
Monica?
I might vote no. I, I think it should be greater than that, too.
All right. You wanna revisit it?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think we need to, we need to send something suitable to um. It was to the supervisors.
You can't make a motion.
I know, I can't make a motion.
Somebody can't, somebody else can.
Yes. I don't think it should go a mile, I really don't, um. And I know we've talked about a quarter miles before too. What does everybody recommend, what, what are some other options that people would like to see in setbacks?
I'd say two thousand feet.
I would say no less than fifteen hundred feet. I bet it was two thousand. We wanna throw that up on the board, to show whether two thousand would be.
Sure. I'm just gonna grab someone that I know has a smaller. Uh, parcel land, something that's kinda close to mine, and we could, I know who all use, it's not smaller. Uh, I really only want one parcel, give me just a second.
Please come on, see if some happened.
Okay, so I, I used one parcel as a reference, and we're just gonna use the whole parcel, cause I can't dwell in on. And we're just gonna use the whole parcel cuz I can't dwell in on, you know, the location of it. So, but if I drew fifteen hundred feet around this parcel. It takes that far out. Oh shit, I wish I'd, mine would've stayed up because I would've went almost into that from where, from where we are. Uh. But, so it's taken out. Um, about five hundred and sixty acres.
See, this is, this is my dilemma because I don't think the six hundred and sixty feet is enough. But I think this is too much because with some of the lays of the land. Um. I, I just think that is too much to take out.
Laurie, is this the two thousand or the fifteen?
This is the fifteen hundred. So basically, what it did is it took fifteen hundred feet from each of the sides of the property lines. And not from the center of, if there was one sitting in the center, um, however. Um, so if I took it from the center of the property, oh dang, this just doesn't wanna work for. I'm sorry, it's the browser, you guys. Well, maybe it's gonna do it now. So if I took from the center of the property. And say there was a turbine sitting right there. And we went fifteen hundred. All the way around.
I'm seeing it, we're watching.
I'm, you know, just doing approximates cuz I can't key in a number. So you can see if we drew a circle around those four points. We eat up that much. And then join back to where we were with that other property, just coming south, uh. If we added fifteen hundred feet from that. Man, I'm really sorry, you guys. That browser is just ugly. But you can see how close we get to. And see how close we get to those, those lines. So if this is fifteen hundred feet right here. And this was fifteen hundred feet here in the circle, you're not leaving anything hardly for anything to happen in between. Well, cuz you got other houses sitting in there, too.
Yeah, and every house.
Every house, right. Yep, so you wouldn't be able to get another turbine in, in between those areas.
Yeah, every house, every cattle building, hog house, chicken house, everything has its own circle. So by the time you put all those circles in there, you're really, you know, you're, you're really uh, limiting, you know, what ground would be available. So it, it really, you know, if the four hundred foot doesn't do it, that, that does.
Oh yeah, absolutely. But yeah, that's basically a fifteen hundred foot green circle to going, going around that, um, that property. Are you guys recognizing any comments? Probably not, right?
Yeah, I mean that.
If we're not taking comments here.
No, we're not, all right, I won't even open it then.
That wouldn't be fair.
No, it's not on the agenda, we can't.
Okay.
Yeah, right. So, does somebody have a motion?
Did you guys wanna also see the, the two thousand?
I think, I get the idea.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
So, where are you guys?
Down in the gallery, please.
Where are you guys on? Any, any motions or what's your thoughts?
Do we have, yeah, do we have any other? Yeah, I, I guess we'll table this one, we need to come back and.
Discussion.
Right, yeah, I mean, right now, yeah, one, one point one, and so we need to, we need to kinda take a look at that.
All right.
So let's go on.
So that's gonna stay for now.
Yeah.
Okay. On both the property lines and the right away.
Yeah.
And someone still has a hot mic out there on Zoom, if you could like check and mute yourself, please. I couldn't find it, you guys. So we're gonna leave it for right now.
You ready?
Um, all right, so. And the same with the communication electrical lines, keep.
Yeah.
Keep that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so um, the sound. And we talked about that, too, about just changing noise to sound.
Yeah, it should, it should be the sound.
Yep.
Oh, you wanna bring back up the?
Sure. So the top was, um. I think we moved it up, um, to fifty decibels.
Yeah.
And then talked about when measured from an inhabited structure. Over fourteen, or excuse me, one thousand four hundred, nah, excuse me, one hundred and forty-four square feet. That's either occupied by human or livestock.
Or are we changing every word from noise to sound?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll let you guys read that, and then there was supposed to be an ambient, um, noise level, um, study. Done before, uh, before the turbines going in place.
Yes.
All right, and then you also recognize that there, um. Eastern Iowa, um, experiences storms. And high winds and that, um, extreme weather events. Can, it winds more than forty-five miles an hour, can cause short terms increases of noise levels. Um, also going, let's go back, uh, uh. You guys had talked about possibly, um. Rewording the sound level at certain distances from a property line. Was that something you guys were still in, um, entertaining?
I think I'm okay with how we have the wording of the. Does anybody else?
Yeah, I was just saying, I don't remember what we were entertaining there.
Um. I think there was some talk about, uh. Making, making changes from property, uh, inhabited property to property lines.
Property lines, yeah, yeah, now that, you're, you're right, that comes back to me now, yep.
But then that would re, rewrite all of B.
Yeah. I think we should leave it as structures that.
Trish structures.
Yeah.
So do you want me to just cross off the note or what's, what are you guys?
I'm okay to cross that off, what does, what does everybody else think?
Anyone else with concerns?
Well. Yeah, now that I remember what we were talking about. Because there, the concern that was expressed, of course, would've been, you know, you know, with the, what about the person that. Sometime in the future wants to build on that edge of their property.
Right.
That was the concern that was brought up, and the discussion was, was, well. You know. Do we zone for the maybe, might, could be, happen thing or not?
And I don't think we should because that could eliminate everything. I, just because somebody in the future says they're gonna do that.
Yeah, that's, that was the discussion, so I'm okay with leaving it the way it is.
Any other comments or?
Do we need a vote, or you guys, what's, cuz I see some, some concerns.
I personally think it should be from property. That's my vote.
We need a motion if.
Making a motion, Mary?
I am making a motion.
I have a motion in a second. All right, just for discussion.
Well, I asked, um.
Who was the second, I'm sorry, Christine, thank you.
At the time, I had asked Laurie, you know, for any of the other zoning examples. You know, do we, do we zone with the possibility? That somebody's gonna do something in the future, a neighbor or whatever, and as I recall. You said, no, you know, we don't take that into consideration for any other zoning.
Right.
Ordinance, and so that's the reason I'm leaning that way, even though I understand where you're coming from. You know, there, there is a chance that somebody's planning to bring, uh, build their dream house out in this side and, but. If we don't deal with it in any other zoning issue, then we're making a special exception for this, and I don't think we should be doing that. I think we oughta be trying to keep this as close to our normal zoning.
But I don't think this is a normal zoning issue.
I agree with that.
I, I don't think this is something that, you know, we all decide, oh, this, this month, I'm, well, this year I'm going to build my dream turbine. Uh, people could say it, you know, my children could want to build a house. On our property, not necessarily where we're that much farther inside, which could be a factor like this on the road, so I don't think.
I, 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 I get what you're saying, but we don't make that exception for any other zoning.
But this is not every order.
Well, it, it kinda is, yeah, it kinda is, where, you know, we're trying to be impartial here. And in, in the sense that we're trying to make a good zoning ordinance, and a good zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily. Take into accounts that special exception, so to speak.
We also have to be good stewards of our land.
Well, I, and, and I, again, I think we're rearranging deck chairs here because. I think that at this point, you know, we've already restricted it, um, enough that it's not gonna happen. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it look like I'm all in favor of windmills, I'm looking, I wanna make it look like I'm in favor of good zoning policy.
May I bring up?
With belt and suspenders.
Can I bring up an, an example? So, um, we recently did a board of adjustment case for a very large commercial size anhydrous tank. And. You know, we talked about some, some setbacks for, you know, what's usually imposed on anhydrous tanks. But we didn't make them go further because someone might wanna build across the road. So.
And that's kinda, and that is really comparable, and, and so I understand, Mary, what you're saying on that, and, and. I can argue either way, however, I do think we need to keep the zoning. Uh. Similar, I don't wanna say similar, but because, to be honest. I don't, I would, if I had to pick between an anhydrous tank and a wind turbine. I would probably pick a wind turbine before I would pick an anhydrous. Uh, excuse me, all right, I farm. This is not the gallery's discussion, this is the board's discussion. And so. I've seen the damage on both what a windmill could do and what anhydrous can do. And if you're standing in a wind, in a, in anhydrous cloud, you're gonna, you're gonna die. Whereas, yeah, there could be debris from a windmill, and I get that, but you're not gonna die unless you're hit by it. And so, I would much rather not have an anhydrous tank close to my property. I don't want either one, but anhydrous would be more dangerous to me.
That was just a real life example we had the last year.
Well, and, and like I said, I just getting back to, I'm trying to, you know, keep good zoning in mind.
Yeah, and I know, yeah, we didn't do the, well, what if someone wants to build across the road?
Right.
Nice black ground on a hard surface road.
Right.
Yeah.
So we do have a motion and a second out on the table, we've moved this to. The property line. And so.
Where is it going to say? Read, read what it would say.
It would go to.
So ambient noise level should be measured, should be measured from the property line.
From any, from the property line instead of any inhabited.
Yeah, sure. All right, I'll call for a vote on this, and you wanna do, uh, a roll call vote?
Yep.
In me last.
John?
I would like that.
So that's a yes?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, explain a little further.
Monica, do you want to?
So instead of with the ambient noise level. Instead of measuring it from the inhabited structure, it would be measured from the property line.
Actually, it wouldn't be the ambient part, it would be the, cuz ambient's before the, um, the turbine. Well, yeah, I guess you would have to measure it from there because.
Yeah.
That's where you'd shut it down, never mind, thank you.
So that's where it would be measured from.
So a yes vote would be.
To change it to property line, correct?
Yes, yes, well, you're changing the property line.
And a no vote would be to leave it at the structure.
Yeah.
John, are you ready?
Uh, I wanna leave it to the property lines, like the, yeah, it's like, yeah.
Okay.
All right, um.
Well, are we, are we trying to make it property line for everything above? Are we trying to do?
I mean, for tower height, then, or, excuse me, for fall zone setbacks?
Well, we never.
We'll, we'll have to discuss that after. So then, if we make one, one way and one another way, are we gonna wanna go back and make it uniform?
I don't think they're, I don't think they're the same. Veronica, what's your thought, Tom?
I don't think they are either, what do you think on that?
I think we should vote on this motion that's on the table.
Let's go.
Even though there is a question kind of about consistency.
I think we deal with that at the time, and that we, um, we, we stretch out the other.
Got it.
Yeah.
I'll try. Well, who knows? Who's inside? I think we got him all right. Should we skip over Sandra for a minute and go?
Well, Sandra, you guess no.
Okay, so my question is, for example. If somebody has a hog house already built. And then somebody else comes along and decides. They want to build a house across that and then they start complaining that the hog house smelled. What happens? Isn't there something about them being grandfathered in?
Nothing happens, correct?
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Right, so is this?
Cause they they knew they knew what was there when they built it.
Right, so that's what my point is. They knew that wind turbine was there when they came to build it.
But with the ambient noise, we're looking at property line, so regardless of whether it's there. Or, you know, whether you're gonna build, so.
They still knew that was there.
Well, we're just measuring the ambient noise, we're not looking at anything.
Your your point is, yeah, I I get your point, Sandra, you're right.
I hear your point, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Figured a different way because we're measuring it before anything gets even built.
Right.
I got one comment to make about a hog house or a cattle or whatever. That's part of agriculture. Agriculture is what this land is sown for. It is not sown for windmills. That's the difference, I think.
We gotta, we gotta vote, so let's.
Okay, go ahead. All right.
Sandra?
Um, I am okay with. The wording that is there, they've done.
Okay, that's a no, okay, structures.
Mike?
No.
Tom?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Monica?
I'm gonna vote no on this one.
So basically, keep it property lines.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That was in my head, came out of my mouth.
Already been a long night.
Been a long week and it's only Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, so we went there, we've got this, that sound. Okay, so there it also is written about um. Noise levels exceeding the criteria of neighbor can sign a waiver. Um, so that levels may be. Increased, the waiver be through the board of adjustment. And but that only be if the filing was accomplished. Written consent from the affected property owners has been attained. And that they're aware that the commercial WEX and the noise limitations. Imposed by the ordinance and that consent is granted to allow the noise levels to exceed maximum levels. Um, otherwise allowed and that the application, or excuse me, the applicant wishes to waive. Wishes a waiver to apply to succeeding owners. Of the property. Permanent noise impact easement shall be recorded in the. Recorder's office of the Jack of Jackson County, which describes the burden properties. And which advises all subsequent owners of the burden property that noise levels in excess. Of those permitted by the ordinance may exist. On or at the burden property. So that here, I'm gonna get back to the. All right, so we're still on page eight, we're down to safety. This is basically a. Some of the criteria, and this was pretty standard. Um, that that. We used and I don't think you guys really made. Um, anything. Significant in changes to that. Do you want me to read it or just? Go down through it, you know, keeping locks on all service doors. Um, what electrical equipment shall be locked when not being serviced. Warning signage placed on the. Towers and equipments and the the entrances um. Qualified inter- inter- engineers shall certify that the turbine foundation and tower design of the WEX is. Within accepted professional standards, given local soil and climate conditions. Uh. Which reminds me, some of the other concerns, talking about engineering. There is concerns about. Fault lines.
That is something that we are not engineers, we are not um geologists. I think the zoning board should stay out of that.
And that is one of the things that are requirements for the application about a geological study before.
Let them decide.
Yeah, that's not.
And so there's another. On river fault coming down through.
Yeah, yeah, I that's just a.
Okay. So. We're number eight going into number nine. Um, I think here, is this where also we addressed the. Aerial applicating, we did.
Yeah, we did.
So um on number F, all WEX shall be equipped with a redundant braking system, which is, I think. Pretty standard. Um, it includes an aerodynamic overspeed control, including a variable pitch tip and other similar systems. And mechanical brakes. Mechanical brakes shall be operated in fail-safe mode. Um, stall regulation shall not be considered as a sufficient braking system. Um. For all guide. Met towers. Um, visible and reflective objects such as plastic sleeves, reflectors, or tapes shall be placed on. The guide wire anchor points and the um outer and innermost guide wires up to a height of twelve feet. Acceptance section may be made from metallurgical towers where. Concerns. Exist relative to aerial spray applications. Of our applicators. Specific signage related to spray applications shall be shall be displayed and have phone numbers and other contact information. Uh, some requests could be made by aerial applicators to shut down turbine turbines for a specific period. Allowing time for uh safe aerial spray applications. Electromagnetic interference, no wind energy device facilities shall be located within a microwave path of an of an emergency communication tower. Any wind energy device facility shall not cause interference with existing radio signals. Telephone service. Television reception, including satellite television and reception or microwave signals. If it is determined that the interference is being created due to the wind energy ju- energy device. Uh, this uh facility, the owner shall take the necessary corrective measures to eliminate the interference. And you guys, um, I know we talked about this a little bit before, but we never, so how do um? Uh, how is there proof that? You know, if this was something that would have never happened before. You know. I can see blaming it on the. On the turbine, however, if it's been happening in the past, but now we have a turbine, so let's blame the turbine, how? How would you? Have to do that, show that there's never been a. Uh, but then again, how do we address it?
This is one that, this is one that does kinda give me a little bit of hurt burn on it because. So depending on the weather. My cell service. Is perfectly fine going up enough Highway sixty-one, correct? But at extremely hot days or. Extreme weather days. There's a section, there's actually two side, two places where I lose my service. So now, if there's a wind tower that goes up next to Highway sixty-one, do I blame it on that? I think this is one that I really do kinda have. A problem with how you move this one.
And then do we have any um, okay.
And then.
Owners shall take necessary corrective measures. But do we have, we don't have really any enforce enforcement.
We don't, yeah, I mean, we don't have the enforceability there.
Would it create the interference of whether it was on or on? Don't know, means you could turn it off if it turned the weather.
Well.
But like.
Things pass out.
But like, that's it's passive owning, I mean, so that this is one that I have, yeah, that I think.
I know, like, I can sometimes make it to the flats. You know, between Springbrook and Springbrook and Andrew, and then other days I can't.
Yeah.
So the sections above that address what they have to do. To mitigate possibility of it.
Right?
So, yeah, did I?
Just.
Should we just?
I think this one, I think this one should just come out, I really.
Right, and then if there's a problem, then.
We're not attorneys. Um.
So, but but if they're following, if they're following the.
Yeah, leave it in there, let the attorney's back over.
I, you know what, though, I, it really falls outside um.
We're asking them to do the thing they need to do to not interfere above this. And if they interfere, then the zoning is already done, so.
Right.
Really, at that point.
I think we're doing our due diligence, watch home for the. Public.
But you know, this. So they're, so.
But I I know we can't enforce it, but I think there's other things in here we can't enforce either.
And. And that's probably true, but with the with the EMI, I mean. And really, isn't a safety issue, I, yeah, uh, emergency communications, I get it.
Um, well, yeah, it's probably not a safety issue, but it's.
But.
That, you know, I don't care really if this.
I I mean. I don't know.
Well, um.
What's hurting by being in there?
I'm saying, I think, I think we got this, I think it's in there because we.
Um, now you guys actually had us rewrite it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think the the general thought was already in somebody else's.
Yes, it was in Delaware counties.
And what did, what? Have you got Delaware counties handy?
I don't, I have it on my desktop and I don't have it here. I mean, we could try to find it online if we needed to.
Well, I think I have it in my file data.
That's right, I sent it to you. Yeah. But while she's looking at that, um, falling into the safety. Um, I just because I think that's the. Um, well, no, I'll bring it up during. A minute um. Avoidance and mitigation of damages, so I'll, oh my god, I have something else to bring up. But we'll get it there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So Chris, we are gonna table that.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's drop down to um. The shadow flicker, which there were concerns about shadow flicker in our public comments during our May meeting. And we haven't made any changes to this part of our draft ordinance since that May meeting. Uh. Where we did, and we're a lot lower than most um counties. We have dropped our. Uh. Shadow flicker from a um. That's on a non-participating residence or occupied community building. Um. Not to experience more than thirty hours annually per year of shadow flicker. So we did go, I think, what was the other, forty and maybe some fifty?
Somewhere forty and somewhere fifty.
So we have um. We have put a lot, we've made some considerable improvement to that for non-participating. Owners. And it broke down to what, on average, like four minutes a day, or I can't even remember what the math on that was.
I can't remember either, but. I think that, I think we had. I think with the thirty hours, I think.
It was pretty significant. Comes down to about four point nine, five minutes a day. On average. Knowing that summers are probably carry a little bit longer. In, well, in some areas, depending on where the sun is.
Right.
In the sky there. So that's where we were on that. Do you need me to read more? Through that part?
I don't think so.
All right, so, and then it talks about working with non-participating residents on that, just um. Uh. So, yeah, we've, that's a lot of. Addressing on shadow flicker, but. Pardon me, do we have another one?
Yeah, with non-participating as twenty hours.
Gosh. We have more, okay, guys, we gotta go back and look at that. Where do you guys wanna land? Cause it contradicts itself.
Oh, it is, that's right, we did, oh, it does, it's this um. We have one that shows twenty and the rest show thirty.
The thirty came down to about um five minutes a day.
I don't remember what we had.
And the other one's about three and a half minutes a day.
Well, yeah, like Sandra just said to me, how we don't enforce that.
Um. That would come back to where the. The owner of the WEX unit would have to. Oh, I see what it did here, you guys. Uh. Um, it talks about. If it it exceeds certain amounts. You know, I I need to read this again, but um we'll table the, table that.
Okay, yeah, let's table this till next time.
And I'll look that over. Again, and, cause I know there was something about shall. Provide mitigation, and I think that's where we are on this.
Okay, all right, yeah, let's.
Okay. So now we're in chapter five for the um. For the um. Avoidance and mitigation of damage to public infrastructure, but let's, before we like. Get to that, let's just talk about some of the um. Conversation I've had with people. We we know there's three turbines in Cedar County that have been damaged due to um lightning and fire.
Right.
And it's like. Of all the thousands and thousands of turbines, we have three in one county on basically one farm. And. I know there's been requests that we write something within our ordinance. That would require the um turbine companies to. Well, here this backup, so the farmer's making so much money off each turbine. So so much money off each of those, say, three acres. And but now he got, he has forty acres he can't use. So do you guys feel it's that we need to do that, or is that something that needs to fall into their contract with the turbine company?
So here's my comment on that. They do get paid a significant amount of money. Um. Like I said, the boot category property owners are getting about thirty grand a year. And so my concern. With this. Making the turbine company clean up. When the duration went through in twenty twenty. On Highway thirty, there's a. There is a rental property where they store RVs, but they've also got um. They've got a building that is also storage inside. And when the duration came through and this building was built the year before. The steel roof, all the insulation was blown. Into the neighbor's cornfield. So. How can we make them clean that up? We don't have anything in our zoning ordinances, we, you have to clean up your own property because we have nuisance. Regulations there. So, and. You've got, and. You've got, and yes, the fiberglass. Is a problem. So is oil, so is steel, and we've got people around the county that are doing that, and they, we force them to clean up their own properties. These two, or these three turbines that have been hit have been acts of God. How can we force them? How can we force the wind energy companies to clean that up? When we're not forcing other people with, um, act of God issues. Blowing buildings. Lot of old buildings, lot of old houses have fiberglass. Uh, lead paint.
Asbestos.
Asbestos, how are we forcing them to clean up? That, that's my issue. And again, they're getting paid a lot of money every year to have that turbine on their property. So. They need to deal with, before they sign a contract, maybe they need to talk to an attorney before they do it. I don't think that is a zoning issue.
Can I speak to that?
No, we're not accepting. No. And we're not doing any public comment.
So if that, those three had damaged forty surrounding anchors, who is liable for that? So if they damaged a non-wind turbine owner.
So typically, I'm not an attorney, but at the same time, so your building burns down and it's in your neighbor's yard, you have fiberglass and steel everywhere. Typically, you're gonna be responsible for cleaning up your neighbor's property. But these, this, um, wind turbine company has not been a good neighbor. You know, to actually the landowners, you know, even the, their properties on. Uh.
And I, and, and I'm playing devil's advocate because they do get paid a lot of money for that, to be there, so. We don't know what's in their contract, is it in their contract that if something happens? Part of the reason that they're getting this payment is that it's their responsibility to clean it up? We don't know that, and since we're not attorneys. We can't, I, I don't think we can dictate that, I, I just don't feel that. Legally, we can do that.
Did we have a requirement for insurance on these similar to? I thought we discussed that at one time too, for these owners to have insurance on it.
We did, but we don't have any, we don't make any other.
Property owner.
Property owners do that.
Right, yeah.
Did, and the anhydrous tank, did we say they had to have insurance on it and provide a COI to the county every year?
No.
We don't.
No.
So I don't think we can force. You know. You know, who's gonna keep track of that?
Right.
All right, is the zoning administrator gonna keep track of all the insurance certificates that have to be done every year? I, I don't think that's your job.
Um, and that's one of those things too, most people do have. Uh, I mean, you know those insure, or turbine companies are gonna have liability insurance. Uh, so, um.
Well, unfortunately, it's probably gonna depend on litigation if they're not, you know, if they're not doing a good, good job.
And they're not being, they're not, the turbine companies are not being good neighbors, that particular company.
Out of our scope.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So they can't combine their crops.
Correct.
Or plant anything.
Correct.
Is there crop insurance or anything like that covering that, or?
And again, they would, they would have to resort to, well, they could see about the crop. Insurance, but they would probably end up having to, uh, litigate against that company.
Yeah, I'm, I've seen pictures, it's ugly.
Oh, I know.
It is ugly and downright.
Yeah, I was gonna say that happens like you were saying with a barn or somebody's house.
And this, these were, and this, they were struck by lightning, it's an act of God, just like a tornado.
Yep.
I mean, we saw that down in Greenfield where we had the videos of the tornadoes that just blocked over. So.
They did what they were supposed to do.
I don't like the idea of that happening to a, a neighbor, but, yeah, I, I agree with, you know, it's really out of ours.
Yeah, it's out of our scope, yeah.
Okay. So you guys are all good with that, or is there any type of vote that's needed?
I, I don't.
I, we're just, cause we're not gonna add anything.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, so talking about roads, some of the concerns and some of the, uh. Some of the feedback we receive from property owners is, um, when these companies come in, they're gonna tear up our roads and we don't wanna have to pay for them. And this is where we have written in to the ordinance that there would be a pre. Pre, uh, construction review, and the Jackson County engineer would, um. Be identif- identifying problems all throughout the construction process. Um, the applicant would be responsible for ongoing road maintenance and dust control measures during the construction phase. And the applicant is also responsible for costs required to repair roads, bridges, culverts. To a pre-construction baseline. Jackson County reserves the right to haul operations if road conditions deteriorate to a port, to a point that creates a hazard to the public. The Jackson County engineer shall conduct a post-construction survey with the applicant and submit. An invoice for all damages to be paid within thirty days of the receipt of the invoice. The applicant shall provide an assurance or performance bond. Of a hundred and thirty percent of the estimated cost. To bring the roads back up to the standards that existed at the time of the pre-constru- uh, pre-construction baseline. When that survey was conducted, so basically, if they didn't adhere to their promise to hold things up. The county engineers asked for an additional thirty percent over the estimated cost to bring them back up to. Um, pre-construct, uh, pre-construction standards.
Yep.
So drainage systems. Um, just basically that all bridges, culvert crossings must be pre-approved by the county engineer. And that's one thing too, when they're, um, doing, um, oversized loads, they have to get permits to travel on whichever roads they're coming across in the county. And those would be oversized loads. Um, the performance bond. The applicant's required to hold a performance bond with their contractor assuring that a hundred percent of the project site is completed. As shown in the application. A copy of the performance bond shall be submitted to the Jackson County Attorney's Office before construction, um. Commences as part of the permitting requirements. I have a question for you guys, a hundred percent. Do we wanna see that increased also? Since we're already looking at the recommendation of the county engineer.
Should we do a hundred and thirty to match what they have?
That was what I was gonna ask.
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody's good, just make a change to that.
Yeah.
Cause that way there's consistency there.
And again, just to clarify, this is just our draft, the supervisors can change any of this one.
Yeah.
They can, so that everybody knows that always.
Yeah, normally, in the past, they normally take our recommendation, but there's been times when they haven't.
Yeah. And there's been times when we've sent things forward with no recommendation.
Right, that's right. That was the night too, wasn't it?
That was pre-me, right?
Yes, it was.
Okay, cause that we haven't experienced that in over two years, so, yeah. Okay. Discontinuation and decommissioning, so this kinda goes back to the talk that we had about those three turbines in Cedar County. So we are giving them one year without energy production to decommission that turbine as this is written. What's?
You know, when yours, and here's my question on that, I know we've talked about this, how do we know that they haven't? Been in use for a year?
Well, some of them are pretty obvious when they're on fire and.
Well, I know that, but if, you know, if you got one.
Sorry.
I know.
I didn't use this phrase, naughty, sorry.
You know, obviously that, I get it. You know, if it's damaged, obviously we know that, but how do we know? How do, how does the county know? That it hasn't been used in a year?
We wouldn't necessarily know, so do we wanna break it up into damaged, inoperable, obviously inoperable?
That's. That's what I wondered about on this one.
Right?
Because, you know, can you require that they show that they're being used? I don't know.
I would think they, you should be able to report from that.
How much, how much it's generating? We could, we could ask.
Doesn't the state have something that shows? Output for windmills? I don't know.
I don't know anything, I haven't heard anything.
Um, says McOakena Valley, do they have to report? To the state on. kilowatts on each generating station that is under.
Now, so we're in distribution. And CIPCO is generation.
Okay.
But I'm pretty sure CIPCO, I am not the CIPCO representative, but I'm pretty sure CIPCO does have to report on their production. But, you know, again, you'd have to have somebody that was in touch with that, you know? We have to report our usage, we have to, you know, report, you know, as far as what we're bringing in from CIPCO and what we're distributing out. Yeah, all of that goes to the state and, you know, and it gets reported.
But that wouldn't necessarily show.
Yeah, you'd, you'd have to look into the generation end of it.
Right.
Okay, and I don't know if they, you know, if we ask for a report, but then again. I mean, I know they've only projected ten turbines for Jackson County, but if.
Can you, can you contact the Iowa Utilities Board and find out if they get a report on each windmill generated?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure they do, but you need to check, yeah.
Verify that.
Verify it. But I think it would be appropriate. Then we could have something in there for, you know, obviously damaged, you know, windmills, you know, if you got one laying on the ground or. One that's burned up, you know, then they need to, to at least submit a plan or, you know, how they're gonna deal with it.
Within how many days after the damage?
Well, what do we have here now?
We have a year.
We have a year, but.
With an obviously damaged, um, u- unit, I think it should be less than that.
I'd like to recommend thirty days that they provide, just, uh, you know, to me, cause you know how ti- it takes time to, pardon me?
Thirty days.
Well, they sh-
They should know if they're gonna, if they're gonna damage one, they ought to know how.
They can, they can submit a plan.
They can submit anything.
Yeah, they could, they can submit a plan.
Follow it. Well, that's.
That's right.
That's the thing, you can, you could give them sixty or ninety days to submit a plan, and that doesn't mean they're gonna follow it easier, you know? So then again, you're back to litigation.
But at the same time, okay, just throw spitball in here, guys. Thirty, you know, thirty days to submit a plan, and do you wanna give them X number of months to follow through? I mean, we're, we're talking, we got three turbines sitting there in Cedar County that have been. Like they are basically for three months, since May, whatever it was.
Yeah.
I mean, that's three months.
We don't want, we don't want that.
You would think they have generalized plans and they could tweak for each specific, they would have to.
Uh huh. Because that, cause that's unacceptable.
But now, these turbines in Cedar County, here's my question on that, because they talked about it in the news story that they had changed ownership. How often have they changed ownership? And did they change ownership in the middle of that three months that it's been there? That was the company, not the landowner. Yeah, the company, yeah.
Well, that is always a danger, is that, you know, it's gonna change hands and they're gonna delay the process because of that.
And, well, I suppose you could put it in there too, that, um. If that happens, and the county has to decommission it and take it down, that's when we use that, that, uh, decommissioning bond. But we don't wanna play that card either.
No, we don't, because.
Because that'll set a precedence.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're kinda. Catch twenty-two.
Well, I think it'd be okay to, you know, say like, you know, they have to submit a plan within thirty days and.
And cleanup should, cleanup needs to begin within sixty days.
That's too long. Don't you think? Think about it, May, May of July, middle of July. I mean, it's still going on, I mean, yeah, it's ninety days and they haven't cleaned up. They might have sent a couple guys out there with garbage bags, but that didn't do much good.
Yeah.
I mean, and, I don't know, but then, okay, guys, we.
Guys try to build anything?
We, we have, um. Think about this, so they don't, then what? Um, we have, um. We have fines in place for property owners that don't follow, but then again, the way our ordinance is written, a five hundred dollar a day fine. Or whatever it turns out to be, is not. Gonna affect a wind turbine company like it's gonna affect one of us.
Right.
And you and I, we're, it's gonna get our attention fast and hard. But for them, that's the cost of doing business maybe, um, but at the same time, can we be punitive enough to, you know, do a ten thousand dollar? Day fine after a certain time, or is that gonna cause us problems for being punitive? Um, against one entity versus treating everybody else different?
That's the other issue.
Should we run this by the county attorney?
I was gonna give you my suggestion.
Yeah. Do you know him?
Cause I'm thinking.
Yes, we can do that, we don't, none of us wanna see that happen here, where, you know, after three months, they're still spinning the wheels on a, you know, mess.
I'm thinking more, um. Like it was mentioned, there's corn on that, okay, if we let them have a whole year, they're not gonna be able to use that the next year.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
And then you got all the fireworks on that, they have machinery if it's not picked up too.
Correct. And it's bad enough if it's the owner that is getting paid for the turbine, I'm thinking about the other ones outside of that, that could be reused on their part.
If it would get that far, we, we don't want that to happen to the neighbor, right?
Right, absolutely.
But just think if that was the lightning strike, let's just say, I mean, there can still be lightning in September when the cornfields are pretty. We'll just say they're starting to dry down, how far is that fire going to go?
Right, that's with anything that's burning, I don't.
If you have a footing requirement that's greater, you won't have a big problem.
A footing?
Footage that we talked about before, it's not gonna cause problems.
Setbacks from property lines?
Right.
But then if a cornfield catches on fire, it's still gonna, it can still run.
That can go, you can't control all of that, but we don't, we wanna control the things we can, so get an attorney's opinion, right?
Yeah, I got it written down in my notes too.
All right, so we're tabling that one.
Yeah, let's table that one.
Okay, so we're tabling the damage, um, the damaged ones. Um. Okay, got you.
I'm gonna check with the state on whether they can.
I have the IUB on here too, yep.
And I'll just put that on there instead of just that.
Hey, um. All right, so the next definition is about non-commercial wax, so like the personal, um, small, um, under a hundred feet. Turbines that people use on their property, so no changes to that, or?
I, I don't think so, I honestly think that, um.
We were pretty much in agreement on a small scale.
Scale, and I think most of us have looked at the ones. Yeah, noise the sound, yes. So wait a minute, we've got, so we changed the non-commercial wax will not exceed one hundred, you had one hundred, we changed that to four hundred?
Oh, no.
No.
No, no, these are.
That's what I thought, no, I, yeah.
Um, are you seeing anything different? I'm seeing. Oh, no, no, we've.
Yeah, I was, I, that again, I'm like.
Non-commercial's always been a hundred.
That's a no.
Yeah, I'm, non-commercial's always been under a hundred, we, we haven't made any alterations. Not to exceed. Has to be under, okay, excuse me, it can not to exceed, it could be a hundred, got it.
Thank you.
All right, so this talks about the set packs, so no part of the wind system, um, structure, including the, the. Wire anchors may see closer to the, the minimum setbacks for that district in which the tower is in, though, um. Uh. And the distance of the base of the tower. Uh, from any property line has to be a hundred and ten percent of the total tower height, so, so like you've got a hundred foot tower, a hundred and ten feet.
Yeah.
Um, but remember, the. Um, but remember, so the guide wires or anything, they can be a little closer, they, they're, you have that, that written as um, the setbacks for that district.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Or changing noise to sound there is off.
Yeah, and I'm doing, I'm writing a bigger note over here too, just so I can check things off as I go.
Oh, you wanna forward ahead of the?
Sure.
You're slow, um, what's going on here?
Uh, starting to get drowsy, it's pretty warm in here.
And it is. So, um, that talks about, um, fifty decibels of noise not, um, measured at the closest dwelling. All right, so, um. Let me see, there was nothing major, major there. Um, and manufacture, inner, the manufacturer's energy specifications, compliance with FAA regulations, compliance with national National Electric Code, I guess my mouth is getting tongue tied to you guys, um. Utility no, notification. So we had a lot of discuss, discussion about this. No non-wax, no non-commercial wax shall be installed until evidence has been given that the utility company has been informed of the customer's intent to install an interconnected customer-owned generator. Off-grid systems shall be exempt from this requirement.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, question, Tom, you might know. So let's say the intent at the time, or supposed intent at the time of the instruct, construction is off-grid. Six months later, they decide has, they wanna go on grid, so they have to make contact with their utility carrier or?
Yeah, they have to make contact the utility carrier, the utility, utility carrier would have come out and inspected that time.
Is it the utility or isn't there, do they have to hire their own state inspector? Cause, well, it have to be, well, it's hooked up, an electrical license, electrician has to do that. And they plan the.
Okay, if you're talking off-grid, somebody can go out there and do it themselves.
Yes.
And, you know, so it has to be inspected, um, before it's hooked up to the, the grid. So they would have to contact their utility, who would come out and take a look at it, and they would, and they would have to have the fire marshal that is, you know, that, that's in under their purview, would have to come out and inspect the electric system to make sure it was all good and safe.
Yeah.
So, yeah, technically, we're good there.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good. All right, um. Also, there's just something I want to ask you guys, just in case the commercial wicks um, kind of stalls out, drags out for approval. If it would, would you guys be willing to separate the, separate out the commercial and the non-commercial ordinance so that we could move forward with the non-commercial?
Yeah.
So like, okay, so if this looks like it's gonna stall out, or if you guys tell me, I'll separate it out now.
Yeah, there aren't any problems in the, you know, non-commercial like there are in the commercial, so.
Well, why isn't that paragraph about the noise similar?
Um. It's, it's two different types of systems.
I know, but it's, it's still, still the same.
So ask me the question again.
If we're worried about the commercial one being too close or changing it from, um, being measured from the, within the structure to the property line, are we not concerned about it here? That's a good point.
Yeah, cause this one's inhabited dwelling. We, we kind of tabled the other one, didn't we?
Right, okay, so why is this any different?
Yeah, yeah, that is right. We gotta wait until we make a decision. And evenly on both.
Yeah. Okay. So table for sound. But other, otherwise, that would be our only sticking point that you're seeing from separating them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the only reason, you know, I see the, the commercial wicks taking a while because that's gonna require a lot more public meetings than the non-commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's, we probably should do that after we get things all set together, but I mean, we've been working as a tonight, we're, marks twelve months that the zoning board has been working on this.
I first gave it to you guys in September.
Yeah, so thirteen months.
Yeah, first gave it to you.
Longer than that.
I did, I started on it in May.
I think whatever changes we make with the next meeting.
We should be done.
We should be done and send it to the board supervisors and let that, this year long, I mean, we, this has been I think, it's been very trying, and I think it's time, time to let it go. I mean, I don't think there's any we're not gonna throw everything but the kitchen sink in. We've got to be reasonable, and I think it's time that it, that it go.
Yeah.
Okay, and there will be public hearings at that level.
Sure.
Public comments, the whole, whole kit kaboodle, um. So, we're done with this part of it? All right, guys, then, so what um, I have next is I need to talk to you guys about an ordinance rewrite for the regular part of the zoning ordinances. Our ordinance is very outdated. The last complete rewrite, or even detailed review goes back to two thousand eight.
Yeah.
Coming in as a new zoning administrator two years ago, I found it very difficult to find definitions for a variety of things.
You're gonna be speaking what it was like before we did that.
Haven't helped us, um, yeah, cause it must have been really bad.
It was, it was really bad, yeah.
It was.
Um, I, you know, I've looked over, you know, other ordinances and, um, but just getting good definitions. There's things that we deal with that we don't even have a definition for.
Yeah.
And there's, um, like home-based businesses that kind of changed a little bit with state code.
Yeah.
Rewriting that to fit state code and then adding some definitions. We don't even have in-home daycares is part of our definition.
That shocked me when you told me that.
I'm like, yeah, and there's just so many different things, but well, or it got dropped somewhere, I don't know, but it's not in our.
You know.
I thought we had listed.
Ten or twenty years ago.
But it's, it's time for a rewrite, so I was gonna ask you guys if I could move forward with it. Um, we're gonna see about contract with ECIA to, to help speed up the process. Um. We, the thing is, we're, we're not recreating it from ground zero like we are this.
Right.
It should move considerably faster. And plus now two years, a little over two years, I can kind of see some of the, I can see where we need to go.
I can understand why you want to do this. I thought we were gonna move straight into solar and get that.
We gotta do that too. Yeah, I know, well, we're gonna do that. ECIA would be doing the other part.
Would be doing the young work on that.
Well, but here's part of where our regular ordinance has problems. It does not have uh, conditional uses such as commercial, commercial wax, um, solar, or battery storage is part of that conditional use. Oh, and another thing, oh gosh. We are being looked at for data mining.
Yeah.
So, we don't even have that as a conditional use in our, in our zoning ordinance.
Um. There's some cases on that from the Iowa Public Information Board, and there's a, there is an advisory opinion that we just put out. Um, I'll find it and send it to you.
Send it to me, yeah. And there's, that's to I U B.
I, I have.
Oh, excuse me.
We, we had a, we had a case that was, uh,
Was it Guthrie?
No, 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 uh, if, if the data, the way the law is written, if the data is there, you know, you can, you can turn that over, however, there was a request for data.
Oh, I think.
Included for years.
Okay, we, we need to backtrack. This has nothing to do with that. Data mining is cryptocurrency.
Crypto.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, totally, whoa, 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 no, totally different, so.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Um.
They're talking about, you know, big loads, you know, on right next to substation.
Yeah, they place them, they're usually concrete storage containers. Um, the miners, our computer, our computers.
Oh, like what you're doing over at the Savannah Army Depot?
I have no idea what's going on over there.
Okay.
So that could be, but, um, you know, some of it is gonna be, um, Amazon type stuff, some of it's, um, cryptocurrency.
I got you.
Most of it's crypto.
Right now, it's crypto. Crypto's gonna what, got a life, uh, yet. You know, at some point, crypto will get all mined. That's not for a number of years down the line, so there are, there are crypto, um, companies out there looking to get into the hinterland, so to speak, because we have availability out here.
Yeah, so.
And, but then after that, AI will follow.
Right.
And so, and just, so we're talking big loads like we haven't seen.
Right, right, um, Guthrie County, the, the data mining operations use as much utility.
It's like the cloud storage locations and the, and the ones that they put down in Des Moines for Microsoft and.
That would be, that, that would be one version of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So in Guthrie County, the, the, the data mining operation is using as much electricity as the whole town of Guthrie center.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me.
Yeah, but anyway, we don't have anything, our ordinance, to address anything like this. And I'd have trouble, I mean, it can happen, we could do it.
We need it.
Well, we could do it as a conditional use, however, under our conditional use part, this isn't listed. So we have a list of things that can be conditional use in different zoning districts. This doesn't cover it, but I think we maybe can make it, we could make it happen, cause we could be getting an application in the next month or so.
Yeah, okay.
What, what would, what would happen if you got an app, or if, you know, somebody came in and said, we're gonna, you know, put a, uh, you know, one of these outfits up next to the Fulton substation out there? I mean, how would you handle it today?
I'd cry and go to lunch. No, um, I'd be in the county attorney's office in a heartbeat, asking how do we move forward with this, and, um, see what we need to do. I kind of, I did let the board supervisors know that we're, you know, I've been in contact, I've been contacted by, um, one of the developers. And, but they're looking at Jackson Jones, Delaware Clayton, so they haven't, I mean, they, we haven't been, you know, there's no location yet. So it could, it might not even happen in our county, but the thing is, just kind of like the wind energy, we weren't prepared for this. And we should have been prepared years ago, and that's what, I just want to prepare things. I mean, I won't be here forever, but just to make this a better place for someone else to come into.
You can't leave until all this is done.
Watch me. No, um, but that's, but that's the goal, is to make this, I mean, where somebody could come in and read it and actually understand it and step and go into three or four different parts of our ordinance. Like today, we had, um, neighbors in about neighbors building a new house, and it looks like it's way too close to the property line. Well, they said, this is where the setbacks, this is what your ordinance says, but I had to flip back to the exceptions. So we had to flip back to the exceptions. I knew where they were, but no one else would find them.
Yeah, we do need that, okay.
So just being user friendly.
Um.
May I move forward?
Yes.
With ECIA?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then.
Oh, and I didn't meant, what, did I mention that, like, oh, yeah, I did, so that the wind, um, the conditional use isn't even spelled out in our current ordinance, so if we were to move forward, we need that in there too. And, but, so by November, October, I'll be ready to throw down some uh, solar stuff to you guys.
Great.
I know you're looking forward to it.
Oh, yeah, um.
Um, the next meeting
like.
Um.
Is September ninth, because.
We got a specific zoning thing to figure.
I'm pretty sure, um, they haven't, they have until, um, Thursday to get their application in. So here's what happened, guys. You guys had a case back in March of two thousand twenty-three
Right.
of a major subdivision north of Bellevue.
Right.
We had some drainage issues that needed to be addressed before we could move forward. So, um, it went through the Army Corps of Engineers who made their decision in June of twenty-four after it went towards them in April of twenty-three of to, to get a drainage tube to, to run in that area of north of Bellevue. So that has now been decided, the way our current zoning ordinance is written, they have twelve months after it's come before the commission to be an adopted ordinance. Well, that twelve months expired. So they need to start over. So instead of canceling the September meeting and making them wait till October, which they're chomping at the bit. Now they finally got the overhead, or the go-ahead from the Corps, so I appreciate you guys.
Are we just dealing with that, or are we gonna try to finish this up here?
I.
Monica.
You were wanting to try to finish things up.
I would like to try and finish it.
Well, let's take care of the building.
First, yeah, and that one shouldn't be hard for you guys, you've already done it.
We've already done it, yeah, right, 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 right.
And then, let's get this cleaned up because I want to be done.
So we can start solar.
There we go.
And see, all this stuff will be done, you know, whenever, you know.
Yeah, let's clean up all the, all those. I am ready for motion and.
Make a motion if there are meetings. See you.
All in favor?
Who was our second, Mary?
Pick one, I think we all said, uh.
Okay.
Did everybody have a sign in this?
Yeah, I hope, hopefully.